All right, the committee of the whole meeting of Monday, February 17th, 2020. Kirk Colorado, please.
Mayor Berman.
Here.
Trustee Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Any trustee comments at this time? Our first item of discussion is, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one tonight's call agenda is the Aurora Packing redevelopment plan. This might look familiar as it was before the village board had committed the whole discussion for concept plan review on October 21st, 2019. This did recently go to the Plan Commission for a public hearing on February 4th, which had full Plan Commission support. I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity to invite the petitioner up here to say a few words, and I will go through the request afterwards and just give them a brief explanation as to what the actual zoning request is going to be.
Very good.
Good evening, Mr. President and trustees. My name is John Whitehouse. I'm the same gentleman who appeared before you in October. The picture on the screen is the same picture you had at concept plan, so we were pretty far along at that time. It's now called preliminary, and we've done a lot more utility planning work and things that Public Works and Water Superintendent have gone over regarding the replacement of some water main and the processing of that. One of the remaining questions from the concept presentation, as I recall, were some concerns with traffic. So we did some manual traffic counts out there on a weekday, and I wanted to just give you a brief summary of that, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But at the north entrance to Aurora Packing, the 24-hour traffic at that intersection, we have about 900 cars coming across the tracks from Route 25 in the day, and that's westbound, and about 742 going east. Of those, 231 come into Aurora Packing and 199 go out. So there's about 700 cars a day in both directions on South Grant Street. About 100 of those southbound go into Aurora Packing, and about 40 of those northbound come out of Aurora Packing. Okay, so as you recall, we expect that ultimately the employment is going to increase by 50% from 300 to 450, not initially, but as we ramp up with the demolition of the existing facility. And truck traffic would probably double from about, you know, between 30 and 35 a day to probably 60 a day. The truck traffic at the north end, there was only one truck, one stray truck, that headed north onto South Grant Street. All the other traffic in and out of Aurora Packing came from Route 25. There were about 21 per day. The south entrance, there were about 28 per day on the day that we counted. So the majority of the truck traffic is at the south entrance, and what we found in the afternoon peak hour, the employee traffic would find the path of least resistance. So more traffic went out south than they did out to the north. Just that light kind of messes things up. Majority of the employees live in Aurora, and they like to leave the south entrance, make a right turn onto 25, and head that way, as does the truck traffic. So one of the things Mike will probably get into, the Plan Commission recommendation after discussion at the public hearing, was that Aurora Packing be strongly encouraged via signage and other things to limit truck traffic to the south street entrance off of Route 25. There's, all their traffic comes off of Route 25, and they're coming typically from 88 to 31 to Sullivan Road. There's no reason for them to bypass that south entrance and come up to the light at Route 25. So we don't want it to be a mandatory thing that could be a cause for issuing a ticket, but it would be strongly encouraged with signage for them to use that entrance, which will be very viable.
Going over the railroad tracks on the south exit is much better than going...
Yes, it is. Yeah, that railroad crossing on the north, obviously, if you've driven over it, is pretty tough. And we don't, you know, they don't drive lowboys across it, which, you know, could get hung up, but it's still not a very comfortable crossing in any event. So, you know, utility-wise, everything's the same, and, you know, Aurora Packing is looking forward to moving this project forward and reducing the impervious area and getting a brand-new state-of-the-art, you know, brand-new pretreatment facility and make Fox Metro happy. The other question that did come up with as far as the waterworks system, there was concern that the water usage would double. Right now, Aurora Packing is the village's largest water consumer at 5 million gallons a month. That would only increase about 10% because of the efficiency of the new equipment and some internal recycling that they would be doing to utilize for their washdown at the end of the day. So that was good news to John and his staff that it wasn't going to double the water use, so.
Great.
So any questions beyond that?
I don't have any. Fine.
We're anxious to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just to wrap it up, so when the Plan Commission made a recommendation for approval, there were eight conditions listed in the staff report. Those conditions will get finalized into the PUD agreement, which would come back at the, you know, maybe even at the next board meeting. We're kind of in legal review right now with the petitioner, so that final language would come back. As far as the actual requests are concerned, there are a few items that the petitioner would be requesting as part of the zoning for the property. The first being the special use for the plan unit development. The zoning ordinance requires that any non-residential development over two acres in size is required to be a plan unit development. So inherently, they're requesting a special use for plan unit development, given the 12-plus acres in size of the property. So that is required by code. The landscape ordinance, which is located in the zoning ordinance, would require, based upon the size of the property, roughly 336 shade trees. The landscape plan that came back includes about 200 shade trees, and those are basically in parking lot islands and dispersed as the site sees fit. Staff has reviewed the landscape plan and feels that the landscape plan adequately addresses the site development. When a portion of Grant Street was vacated back in, I think it was 2014, the village retained a portion of easement over the portion of Grant Street, which you can kind of see right here in the plat of consolidation. The village retained easement rights over that property. It is just considered basically private drive at this point. There are some utilities in the ground of the village. There are two small segments of the actual building that would be placed into that portion of the easement, which the village has rights to. I believe it's actually, I can show in this plan here, it's a very minor encroachment. You can see it here and here. Those would encroach into the small easement area, so that would require approval. And again, all these items would be brought back into the PUD ordinance itself for consideration by the village board. Another aspect of approval would be the actual parking of the ADA handicap spaces on a portion of village property. This portion of land right here is owned by the village, and the actual plan calls for a number of parking spaces, I think there are seven ADA parking spaces, that will be located on the village property. And as part of the PUD ordinance, we bring back language that would require that the village work with the property owner to maintain a no-fee lease for the property. We're not looking to obtain a fee for the property because it could create issues with the tax status of our property, so we're not looking to actually gain any financial windfall in this, just basically work with them to allow them to park on that piece of property, given the fact that they would construct and then they would maintain the parking spaces. The site plan approval, it's a non-residential development, and the addition itself is over 25% of the gross floor area, so by code, it's required to have a site plan approval. And again, staff has gone through quite adamantly with the petitioner, the site plan, and reviewed it in detail. The plat of consolidation, the parcel is a mishmash of about 14 different parcels right now, and as part of the plat of consolidation consideration, we would be basically bringing it into two separate lots, one of which would be the main campus, and one would be an orphan piece, Lot 2, which would eventually become green space when the Phase 5 is the remediation portion the plan would come into effect. Again, this plan did go before the Plan Commission on February 4th with full support of the Plan Commission.
Comments from our board?
I mean, I think it's a well-designed project, I think.
I think we're all looking forward to it.
Yeah.
I think we're excited about it, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
That's it, huh? Thank you very much. We have no executive session?
Nope, we have item two.
What, item two? Oh, I'm sorry. We did have item two. I guess I'm anxious. Mike, item two.
Yeah.
Yeah, item number two is the Randall Crossing mixed-use development. This item, as was discussed by the Committee of the Whole on January 20th of this year, we actually discussed the plan. It had gone to the Plan Commission early in January with full support of the Plan Commission, brought back later at the January 20th Committee of the Whole for discussion, where the plan was discussed by the petitioner and staff. Tonight, we had the formal public hearing for the annexation agreement amendment, which is required to allow for the development of the property, the residential use, being that the PUD ordinance is an exhibit to the annexation ordinance. So the annexation agreement is being amended to allow the development of the property through the mixed use. Also, too, the petitioner is requesting a reduction in impact fees. They're requesting a reduction in impact fees, which was a similar reduction to that in 2017 of their hotel development, as they did develop the My Place property directly to the north. The actual schedule of the annexation agreement requires that the commercial portion of the property or the development would be $3 a square foot for the traffic impact fee. There would be 2,800 square feet of actual commercial space equating to $8,400. The annexation fee currently reads that the petitioner paid $1,800 per dwelling unit. Again, when Randall Highlands came in, it was a mixture of single-family and townhome. It was never anticipated that this would facilitate any apartment development or studio or one-bedroom apartments. 28 units at $1,800 a unit would be $50,400. Also, too, which is similar to the 2017 request, would be the elimination of the water connection fee. It's anticipated at this point in time that a three-inch connection would be made, so the three-inch connection fee would be about $10,765, bringing the total reduction in impact fees to $43,668, based upon the current water connection fee and the current square footage. There would still be a traffic impact fee at the $1 request, at the $1 per square foot for the entirety of the building, which would come to about roughly $25,000. So that's just a little brief overview. I'm going to allow the petitioner to come up and say a few words, speak to the request.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mayor Berman, village trustees. My name is Ed Roberts, and I represent the development group for this project. As Mike stated, we are requesting that we get certain reductions on both the traffic impact fee as well as the water connection fee. We're taking, we're requesting that we take the traffic impact fee down to a dollar and basically waive the connection, water connection fee. We, a couple differences from the hotel. So those two requests are exactly similar to what we requested on the hotel, as Mike said, but we will not have, obviously, the school district property tax abatement that we do on the hotel currently. And obviously, as you all know, in Kane County, we're going to pay an additional traffic impact fee to KC DOT, and approximately $24,000, if we get the 40% reduction, which I'm told we will, because it's all the same metrics that we had for the hotel, being that it's contiguous to, the property's contiguous to, the hotel property. Park fee of about $38,000 plus, and again, no help with the school district on this project. So that's our request. It's identical to the hotel, and just like to review and discuss any questions or topics that you'd like to ask about.
So what's the hardship on that, then, that you're asking for these fee reductions?
I'm sorry?
What's the hardship? I mean, what's, you know, we have these fees for a reason, and it's just, you know, not everybody asks, but, I mean, we just can't give them all away, so I'm just curious what the hardship is of this, or you're just asking?
It's all about helping a pro forma work. It's all about trying to reduce some fees where we can. We do have, we do have some additional fees on the site work that, if you notice, if you, you all noticed, because you've been by there several times on the Ritter side, you know, we've got quite a bit of a slope street to the property there. So we're going to have some, you know, increased site work costs that we weren't expecting. But the bottom line is, it's just a matter of trying to save a few bucks here and there and make your pro forma perform a little better.
Where's the property? Is it over by a orchard?
It's...
Right by My Place Hotel.
Lot 3, so if you know where the hotel is...
Yes.
It's the lot due south of the hotel.
Okay. I know where it is.
Mike, I have a question about the water connection fees.
Yes.
These fees, they incorporate our cost and our material cost as well as labor. Is that correct?
Well, the developer actually pays for the actual cost of the meters, the connections. It's more or less an impact fee that gets, in some inadvertent way, put back into the, for the system maintenance itself. All the infrastructure on-site is actually paid for by the developer and later accepted by the village as public infrastructure.
When they did the hotel, did they have the same deal?
Correct, yes. It was, what they're requesting tonight is exactly what they received approval for in 2017.
I'm agreeing with Mark in that we do have these fees for a reason, and now we have a precedent that we gave them, we gave them away one time, and now subsequently, they want the same deal again. I'm just wondering, I mean, are our fees that much out of line, or...
Well, these were created, again, these were, the traffic impact fee is not a prescribed impact fee, meaning that it's not in our code. A lot of these were negotiated pre-recession, so they were put in at a different time. A lot of them are $2, $3 a square foot, mostly for commercial. The units itself are residential, are basically based upon a unit count. It wasn't just for the hotel, so back in 2015, we actually reduced the impact fee for the Springs apartment as well. I think we went to about $360 a unit for the Springs. So if you look at the square footage of this, I think the studios are maybe 475 square feet, and the one-bedrooms are roughly six-something. At a dollar a square foot, they still would be paying more than the, what was approved for the Springs development back in 2015.
But where's the uniformity in having this code? It seems like it's arbitrary that it's, somebody asks and we're pulling out the dartboard.
Yeah, they were negotiated time of annexation, that would have been at that time. Some developments aren't subject to annexation fees, you know, the Aurora Pack being one of them, because the property's been in the village for longer than a 20-year time period. Once the 20-year time period goes away on annexation agreements, these, some of these fees would just go away, and you'd just be subject to code-based fees.
My concern is that now we are going to have expenses related to this development, whether it's traffic impacts, wear and tear on the roads, and if it's not being addressed by the petitioner, then it's going to be absorbed by the rest of the village. And I don't know if that's fair to the rest of the taxpayers, that we're now having to, you know, absorb these costs when they're not the ones causing, you know, the wear and tear.
Well, and didn't we just have an issue with paving the roads in that PUD a couple years ago, because we couldn't find any of the owners, and the village had to go in and pave the roads?
Yeah, which the developer paid a share of. So yeah, Randall Crossing Lane in Kilbury, which kind of goes around Turf Room and down south, down to like Bulldog, that's all, those are all actually private roads. So a lot of these roads that will be used for this development are actually private already, Ritter being public, Comiskey being public, but these are, there are a lot of public, or private streets in that area.
I look at it, it's an incentive. I mean, call it what you want, it's an incentive, and, you know, having four-story apartments, I mean, it might have been different when we looked at the hotel to have that, but, you know, I don't see it. I mean, to have apartments there and what's, you know, I mean, the village is going to benefit some from a rooftop or bodies over there, but as far as any commercial development, it's going to be very, very slim there, and they give away this kind of money.
How many people are going to be there when it's completed that live there?
Well, it'll be, it would be a three-story building with a total of 28 units, consisting of studio and one-bedroom apartments.
So roughly about 60 people, maybe a little more?
Yeah, I think the code itself, when you apply our population formulas, it's going to anticipate maybe about 40 people living there. Forty-three, I think, was the final number.
Then there's going to be a little bit of area down there for like retail.
Correct, 200 square feet of that is going to be retail.
Sandwich shop or something like that.
Very little. Correct.
And we're going to have the dentist office come in here when they're done, too, and look for impact fee reductions also, because...
Their permit's already been paid for.
Well, he had a zillion change orders. So the bottom line is, what is the bottom fee that he's looking for?
Well, the, when you look at the actual schedule for Exhibit L, this is actually taken from the annexation agreement, and they would be subject to a number of the different fees on here already. Anything that would denote residential in this case would be paid by the petitioner. They're going to be paying $715 a dwelling unit for the fire, $120 a dwelling unit for the library. The school district fees don't apply in this case because they don't apply to multifamily that are less than two bedrooms, so the school fee wouldn't be paying. And the petitioner was right, the park district impact fee would be about $38,000 for those residents, based upon 10 acres for 1,000 population, or one acre per 100, and that'd be about $38,000. They would be subject to the $175 per stormwater fee, and then the tap-on fee as well.
But that's a cost of doing business. I mean, that's just the way it is. I mean, you list all these off, but I mean, that's, there's profit to be made, too. I mean, their places are, what, 80, 90% full, your apartments? I mean, that's, you need to figure that in, but I just don't see taking $30,000 from the tap-on fees or different things, and then, like Laura said, you know, somebody's going to pick up the slack, it's going to be the rest of taxpayers. And the incentive to have 60 more people in a four-story apartments is not that I was hoping that property was going to be fully commercial, you know, and this is, and then now we're going to give away sales tax that we could have had there for apartments that not everybody is really happy about to have. So I don't, I'm not really in favor right now, so. Can't give away everything, so.
Well, if I can make a couple comments, we're looking at about 100, just over $110,000 in fees here, and, you know, obviously, you know, Park District doesn't come here and so forth for fire protection, but, you know, we're talking about a lot of money, and that doesn't include the traffic impact fee to Kane County, doesn't include Fox Metro. I mean, we've just got some heavy fees happening here, and we always appreciate concessions that the board has helped us out and made for us, but, you know, we are, I would, I hope to say that we're the leading developer in your community, and we're going to continue. I, you know, obviously, we have one more lot that we're talking to restaurant users, which is Lot 4, directly south of the Turf Room, and we've already spent a decent amount of money in working with Steve and Mike over on the Hard Corner at State and 31. So I mean, we're, I just, I just wanted to point that out, that we are committed to the Village of North Aurora, and we are committed to making it better and improving the village. And it just, we're just trying to help the pro forma a little bit. We obviously have some tariff issues we're going to have to deal with, they're going to increase material costs, and, you know, it's just, I would just like the board to just, you know, realize those points and make a concession in this case.
I mean, have they asked the library or Fire District or anybody else for concessions?
I've been told on previous runs that that isn't going to happen, so.
You were aware of these fees prior to starting your development, right? Because you developed something else before, and some of those fees were already there.
Correct.
So it looks like the water tap-on fee, meter reader, the one portion down there, that's what you're asking for, for a rebate? I mean, that's what, essentially is what you're asking for, is the water tap-on fees, water sewer tap-on, is that what you're looking for?
Traffic impact, too.
And traffic impact.
Reduced from $3 to $1.
Right.
Like Mark said, you know, we had, the asphalt was a big deal three, four years ago out there, and we had to put a second lift on all that, and, you know, I don't think none of us mind helping businesses in our community, but, you know, go back to the well over and over, and I mean, you know, it's business, you know? You make money off of this, and you should, you know, we have to, you know, we have to answer to the taxpayers, and, you know, we can't give everything away all the time.
I agree with Mark. I would like us to take a look at our policy going forward on this, because it seems like whether it's Mocha Coffee or a large developer, you know, everybody comes out with their hand out wanting a rebate or a deal or a discount, and I'm really getting tired of it. I think we really have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers and to our village and to be good stewards, and like Mark and Talad said, you knew about this going in, and I understand that you want to be as profitable as possible, but in the meantime, this isn't our money, this is the taxpayers' money. And, you know, I'm all for helping out when we need the help, but the economy's doing great, our businesses are doing great, and I think going forward, we need to take that into consideration as well, and not just keep giving away the farm.
What is the total amount that he's looking for, the rebate?
Yeah, so, there's a couple of different things here. So if you were to take into consideration this building, that the original pad site, this original pad site that was to be there, would have been about 4,000 square feet. So if you would have applied the original $3 per square feet, you'd be looking at about $12,000. In this case, because the building is a larger size, even with the reduced rate, they'd still be paying double what the original actual fee would have been for the actual building itself. So if they pay a dollar per square feet at 25,000, 25,000 square feet, Mark, the traffic impact fee itself would be about $25,000, originally would have been about half that, because the preliminary plan had a development that was, again, had a ground floor area of about 4,000 square feet. And again, the water connection fee is prescribed in the code. For a three-inch connection, it would be $10,000. So at the end of the day, and I'm not trying to spin this in any way and go against the board's opinion, it's, they'd be paying more than what was originally approved as part of the PUD itself.
So how's the dentist going to look at that? You said the dentist is all paid up with his fees, so he paid full boat for his stuff, right?
I will say that I don't see with a 28-unit development, residential development, if the traffic impact fee was originally $3 under a proposed commercial PUD, you're not going to have the same amount of traffic. So I will concede that, as you would in just a fixed residential. So I'm okay reducing the traffic impact fee, because I think there's a rational basis for doing that. I would say I would be against the waiving the water connection fee, the tap-on connection fee, but if you reduce the traffic impact fee, because there's not really an impact on traffic with 28 units, residential units, and the commercial down below is kind of geared for the hotel traffic and the residents, isn't it? Or is it kind of a, do you foresee people coming into that as a destination? We hope so. Okay, certainly.
Yeah, well, if there's a sandwich shop, perhaps you'd get some more extra people coming in, you know, into it.
They might be walking more than driving there from that.
But it's still going to be minimal compared to what was anticipated under the original PUD, I think.
I can lean that way, with you, yeah.
So I'd be okay with the reduction of the traffic impact fee, but I think we should stick with the tap. That's my opinion, the tap-on fees.
I think that'd be fair.
That's fair, yeah.
You know, we appreciate you guys' interest in development, and I think the board has shown that they, we all do, and we supported the previous development of yours, and, I mean, as Laura said, we do have to be accountable to taxpayers, too, so I would agree with, you know, your input in that, and I think it would be a good mediation to this.
Well, we, again, I want to state to all of you, we appreciate the concessions and the assistance you've given us on everything we've done, but, you know, we, it would help us out greatly if we could get some help here, so.
Yeah, so just to put things into perspective, if you were to just look at the traffic impact fee... fee, the total reduction would be about $32,000.
From 110,000?
Well, you know, you'd be going from 58.8, which would've been the original transportation impact fee, and you're basically going to 25,897. So it'd be roughly, the traffic impact fee would be reduced to about $32,000.
I'm okay with that.
Any comments?
Because we can at least justify to the next person that comes in here, why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Any justification for the water? Water fees, water connection fees being reduced? Or eliminated?
They're probably gonna use more water, probably, than the commercial, maybe.
If I could make a suggestion, based on the conversation tonight, we have been getting more incentive requests. We are reviewing another one currently internally right now. And with those being, with that being said, I think it probably makes sense to bring something back to a COW discussion in a little bit, maybe a few meetings from now, maybe look at some kind of approach. I think we talked about it a few years ago. Maybe now it does make sense to bring it back again and have a conversation about having kind of a standardized assessment of when incentives are brought to the board and when they're not. I think the staff here has always lived by the motto that the village board is the leaders of the village and should always make the final say in everything. But with your permission through the, essentially a policy, what we could do is, some of the staff, we can head some of these requests off a little tighter before they get here. I will tell you right now that the traffic impact fee for this, the rationale was clearly, when it went to Mike, was based on the fact that the use changed, and that's why it was brought forward tonight. But as far as the water connection fee, these are general requests that we've always felt internally, we just don't have the ability to deny without the board's approval or a policy in place.
No, I get it. I understand. Yeah, we understand that. You mean, you're keeping in the library, the school, the fire?
Right.
So, yeah.
Well, I think we sorta got a feel from what we have, so I think we need some more discussion internally, whatever. Any other discussion to come before us? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, we have no executive session? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.